All right, it is 5:30 and we are going to call the meeting to order. All right, first part, we're going to open up a public input period per RSA 18974. So if there's any public input, just let us know. Raise your hand, carry your pigeon, whatever. All right, um, got any announcements?
No.
All right. Um, finance update? Oh, are you in for Molly today?
I'm in. Good evening. In the board pack, we sent you the financials and the latest financial update. So you'll see that during this last month, we had additional expenses of $38,295, which comprised of some substitutes, some additional supplies and things, and also just some account changes. So does anyone have any question on any of those items?
Yeah.
Got any questions?
I do not, nope. No.
Good. All right.
Also, we sent you where's the new proposed budget. How would you like to review this? Do you have a special way we'd like to review it? Or would you like to hear a no review from Brandon or myself?
Why don't we start with the overview? Brandon, you were drawing the short straw.
That's okay. So as of past years, we are going to go over really the biggest changes in our budget, the increases and decreases. The positions of teachers, depending on how negotiations go, will be reflected as a separate warrant article through this, so it's not going to be in the draft budget.
Yep.
We did have a turnover in Special Ed with Kelly Lukach leaving and us bringing in a new teacher, so we did see a slight decrease there of Special Ed. The hourly employees, our support staff, there is a separate sheet.
Budgets.
As we had talked about last year.
Do you have a budget and agenda?
Oh, sorry.
Member of a public budget and an agenda, please? Sorry.
So in the pack, you will have seen some of the changes that we have recovered from last year, making it over a two-year span there, so that is an increase there.
Did we make up the full two-year span? Or did you go partway again?
We did a bit last year and then a bit this year.
This completes it.
This completes it, yeah. Okay, yeah, that's what I was asking.
Yes. We have the provision for retirement in there, which is an increase. We did make an increase in our supplies as subscriptions and dues and classroom supplies go up. We have to make an increase there. We've had a change in preschool and special education, so we did see a $15,000 increase in our public school tuition line there. There is a pretty large decrease with our school psych service. Trish Merrill, who used to work part-time here, is no longer part of our district, so we are now contracting out, so that will show up in a separate line in the contracted service there. We did add one day to our occupational therapist, who the past year worked two days a week because of the needs in our school and through our preschools. We did add her one more day.
Good.
The SAU assessment, really, we don't have control over there, but there is an increase of just over $12,000 there. This is the big one that we've been talking about with our roof. We added $49,000 additional to what we had budgeted last year for maintenance, and that's something that we're going to talk about, kind of how we want to fund that, either through our budget or possibly using trust fund money to make that happen. We got the official vote is around $76,000 to do the roof, and we initially thought that the air conditioners would have to be lifted up off the roof. That does not have to happen, so that is actually.
Oh, that's good.
Should be much cheaper than it was when we thought it was going to be closer to $100,000.
Okay.
Our trash and mowing and that type of equipment have gone up for our facility maintenance. Trantation, which we contacted first, we saw an increase of 2.95%, which is just over $3,000 there. Michelle, can you talk more about the health and dental?
Yep. So we work with Health Trust for our health and dental, and every year around this time, usually in March or October, they give us what we call a GMI, our gross maximum rate, which is the highest that we can expect next year's, you know, increase to maybe. So this year, they gave us a 9.9% GMI for health and a 4.7% GMI for dental. So we basically take your, the people who are on your bill at the moment, and any expected changes that we don't know about, and we apply those rates to them included in this budget.
And we also, as every year, we have the projected food service loss that we put in there, is $10,000. So with all that, with those huge changes in the areas, we see a total budget of $3,608,581.5 with an increase of 5.66. But again, this does not include the teacher contract, which will be a separate warrant.
And that includes the roof though, right? Okay, right.
Any questions just off this first draft?
I have a question. So under, from what it looked like, and I will be the first to say that I'm not awesome at reading this stuff, so I'll throw that out there right now. But under dues and subscriptions.
Yes.
I felt like there was a lot, a huge increase in those, but I'm not sure what I'm looking at. So what are we subscribing to and how do we know that it's working? And what do we really need versus what do we really want?
For regular ed or special ed?
So I think it was under regular ed.
Can you repeat it, Tom?
Yeah, hold on.
What?
Yep. So I was looking under regular ed. It went from a 23-24 budget of 8,600 to 14-1. Like, why is that the increase? And then the literacy program, I guess, is 21-8-5-0, but is that just for the literacy program?
Sorry, my pages are different.
So I'm on page one of eight on the proposed 25 budget.
Yep. My pages are different, so I'm just.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
So on 105-0 page 10?
Yes, so in there for dues and subscriptions, we have Hegarty comes out of there, Acadians, which is one of our fall winters being benchmarking. Oh, the biggest changes for the last two years, iReady reading has come out of a federal grant. It was only for two years, so that total was $3,600. That's why you've seen the large.
So the federal grant was paying for iReady. Now we're absorbing that cost.
Yes.
Okay. It's just a huge from, it's just a big jump, right?
Yeah, the big jump was because that is $3,600.
And are we still using iReady? Yes.
Yes.
But we're also using Acadians.
Correct.
Okay.
And what was your other question?
Other question?
What's that?
That, well, there's others. I feel like the health and dental, that's unavoidable, that's across all places, correct? Like, the 9.9, and even in schools that I work in, other places, that increase is going to be regardless of outside of the district's control.
And we actually received a slightly lower than some of our others around, you were talking about, 14.6.
Yes.
There was one that you thought like a 20% increase, so 9.9, as bad as it sounds, it's not.
It's still reasonable.
Yes.
I just have a question, Brandon. What portion is for the solar panels under that repair and maintenance line of increase of $49,000?
That is for the roof. Our solar panels, we're still trying to get more information on.
Okay, so the 49 is just the roof and the solar panels?
We took, we ended up taking the solar panels out of the budget. We can't get any information to add to the budget for something. We just figured something needs to happen later on, and might be a conversation about the sergeant trust fund or something else, but.
And what is happening with the solar panels?
It's over trying to find out.
Oh, you don't? Yeah, not sure.
There's no information in this building that states anything about what we're getting with solar panels, so what we were working on.
Oh, wow.
We need to figure that out, but it's a soft issue.
And we've been on the company a couple times, and now we've asked trustee to direct the facilities, because he has a schedule being done for a different project in SAU 16, to get information about his team, so he hasn't been there.
Okay, yeah, thank you. I would definitely like to hear how that comes back. Yeah.
If we were to dip into the maintenance fund for the roof, how do we go about that?
So there's two funds we have talked about. There's the maintenance, but there's also the sergeant's. So I think we have to decide which one we would entertain first.
You have two options if you wanted to use one of the trust funds to do the roof. The sergeant's fund will allow for it. It's probably good of all. The guideline for that is actually really loose. It's just really about the good and safety of our students, which a leaky roof counts. And four, you can use the maintenance trust fund. So the sergeant's fund has not been used for a very long time, and it has more money in it. So this is something for you to consider. Do you want to put the roof in this local budget? Do you want us to take it out? And then do you want to make a motion at the end of the school year and ask the trustee for money to fix the roof this summer? So those would just be things for you guys to ponder.
Yeah, to me, a big chunk, like redoing the roof, seems like perfect opportunity to use a trust. Trust funds. It's not a revolving thing. It's a one-time type thing, so. Do we decide that now?
You can, yes, you can ask us to take it out of the budget and send you a new budget for the next meeting if the roof is not in it. And then after that meeting, you can make a motion to look into, we call it trust funds, and then we could do that sooner rather than later. Because the nice part about doing that this year is that we can start with the roof repairs and set up, get on their schedule and get a time set, so we can definitely get all the granters to be able to request the money from the trust fund, and take it out of this budget. So we can somewhere you can make that motion.
Okay. Next question. Can you tell us the new percentage with that? I figured you knew that was coming.
I was imagining.
Do you two have an opinion on this?
I concur with you. I think sergeant trust is the way to go.
Okay. Should we vote on this, some sort of way?
New percentage?
Yeah. Yeah, make a motion for us to take the costs of the roof out of the local budget, and then the board will see the trust members report.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to take the roof repair costs out of the local budget.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And then we'll all work with you to contact the trust people? Is that?
Yeah, Molly.
Okay, all right. Do you two care which trust we try to go after?
I would look into the sergeant funds now that you've stated what that fund is for. The maintenance fund, to me, is for like emergencies, and so.
Where, I think in the last meeting, I said we were just at what we budgeted and anything happened over the summer and fall. So we're going to be dipping into the maintenance fund this year because we're already over our minds.
Okay. All right.
Yeah.
Okay. Everybody good with that?
Yep.
Yes.
Excellent.
Yay!
All right. How is that? Everything?
Everything for me. Does she have more questions?
I have one question. If we go into the sergeant fund for the maintenance, for the new roof, can we look into adding the solar panels now because we're using the sergeant fund? Or is it one half does and the other? Meaning, we're looking anyway, it will be part of the cost? Or did we take the solar panels out because of the cost?
We have solar panels right now.
Oh, okay. Oh, in the wayback.
Right. What we can't figure out is what are we getting in return for that investment?
Okay.
And we estimate repairs, because it was done so long ago, what's that going to cost us versus what are we getting back, so?
So once we do that research and find out, can that be part of the sergeant funds also? So we're not taking out of the maintenance for those solar panels? Like, can we wrap it up? Or is it only one? For the safety and security, like, for what the sergeant fund is asking for, I guess I'm just asking, can we make it a package deal? Because it's a one-time fund that we're taking out of. It won't come out of the maintenance, but we can then use the solar energy. I'm just asking.
I think, I'm not sure if we can use, I don't want to say we can use the solar panels from the sergeant solar panel, but I will find out and have that information for you at the next meeting or email to the board with that information about that.
Okay.
Yeah, more information was Ruston Thomas, the company that installed the solar panels.
Because you said it was for the safety and wellbeing, so I think that would be, might be a little bit of a stretch.
Yeah, that's what I'm just not sure. It's a good question to say.
Okay.
But I don't want to say it's not.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions?
I do have a. So I'm just looking at the regular ed aides, and then I'm noticing for the salaries of special ed aides, is that just a change in student need? Because it looks like we shifted a little bit there.
Safety number of people shifting to the specialized line, or regular ed budget line to reflect what they really do.
Okay. And then the salaries of the teachers, I'm assuming that's still the nine teachers? Like, are there any changes there? Still the nine? Okay. And then we're still doing music and PE and everything's the same? So, okay, cool. I figured you would have said that, but I just like to ask. I think it's a different thing else. I don't have anything else right now.
Okay.
Yeah, what's the sign? By moving the road to 4.19.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's better.
All right. Uh, business and financials, we're done? Got anything else? All right. Approval of minutes. Do you guys have any issues with the minutes?
I do not. I know, right? They're good. I'll make a motion to approve the board meeting minutes from October 10, public and non-public.
All in favor? Or I second the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Principals reports.
I think in the, maybe August meeting, first of all, I can't remember which, we talked about how we applied for a grant to assist with, really focusing on the ergonomics for our students, chairs, how they're sitting, comfortable in their space, and also some sensory walks, sensory movements that we could either put in the playground or through the hallways. We were awarded the grant, $25,000. Our school counselor, Paige Tool, and our occupational therapist, Kelly Dusel, they were the brains behind the grant. They did the majority of the work for the application, and will be doing the majority of the work. It is a one-year grant, so we need to spend the money by the spring. So we are in the process right now of measuring students and chairs and tables and looking at sensory pathways and that type of thing. So it is a pretty big deal. We're excited about it. We're excited because it's exactly what our students need, and I think that's the main reason why we got it, because it is a huge need. Some of our furniture is extremely old in our building, but not there. So we're hoping that we see the benefits of that academically, behaviors, and that type of thing go down because students are comfortable where they are in their classrooms. So again, thank you, Mrs. Dusel, Mrs. Dusel and Mrs. Tool for that. We also, last month, had our Hampshire Fund Event Facility Inspection. They were here on the 23rd of October to inspect our building, our grounds, our kitchen, and we passed, with fine colors, Mr. Mizzi. A huge thank you to him for coordinating that and doing such a good job of keeping our building. Our enrollment numbers as of last week are staying at 118, 20 in kindergarten, 23 in first grade, 23 in second grade, 12 in third grade, 21 in fourth grade, and 19 in fifth grade. I want to thank our PTO for an amazing fall festival we had a couple weeks ago. It was so well-intended, I think better than they anticipated. It was a huge success. We had a wonderful turnout from community members, students, parents, even some of our neighbors, enjoyed the live music going on and sitting on their porches. I want to thank some of our sponsors. New England Pizza Company, Jones General Store, FLC Corporation, Front Row Pizza, JTB Construction, Pine Garden, Thirsty Moves, and Randy Hogs Entertainment for sponsoring our event. Now on to our fall data review. The SAS scores are still not made public, so we expect that to be in the December meeting. But we do have all of our fall benchmarking data here. I want to thank Mrs. Schuster, who's here tonight, for helping with this report, but also for really taking on double duty with our math and our reading for the fall benchmarking. We had two major benchmarks that all of our students participated in. One was the iReady, the universal screener for all reading and math. And as we've stated in the past years, the way iReady is set up, we should expect. Let me see now. We should expect to see more yellow in the fall, and as we move to the winter and the spring, we should see that yellow start to fade away and more green as we move forward. Directly from iReady's website, we just posted it on here, that we should expect to see many of our students one grade level below. And I just put the definition on there. Definition is students at this level are approaching grade level expectations. They will benefit from continued on-grade level instruction. Implications for instruction, students who are one grade level below on their beginning of the year diagnostic are performing consistently with students who have just begun their academic year. And again, we should see more green at the end. Mid-year and end-of-year diagnostic may need intensive intervention, which is what we're, what we've been doing. Our students in the fall for iReady reading and math are assessed on what, where they should be in the spring. They're not necessarily assessed on where they should be at that moment in time, which is why you see more yellow at the beginning of the year. So for currently with reading, we have 17% of our students are two grade levels or more below. 49% of our students are at one grade level below, the net yellow, and 33% of our students are on or above grade level. What iReady measures for reading is phonological awareness, phonics, high-frequency words, vocabulary, comprehension of informational text, and comprehension of literature. And we'll move on to our iReady math.
Real quick, I have a little quick question. So right now, if they're evaluating as one grade below, are they actually kind of at the right spot since it's?
Most of our kids in the yellow are kind of where they should be.
Okay.
And I'll talk about the Acadians here in a minute, and then I'll kind of pinpoint some more information for you. Same thing with the iReady math, kind of what the yellow means. What iReady math measures, numbers and operations, algebra and algebraic thinking, measurement and data, and geometry. Currently, right now, 9% of our students are in the red at two or more grade level below. 78% of our students are in the yellow, one grade level below, and 12% of our students are on or above grade level. Any questions on the iReady at this moment? Acadians reading, so this is the first year we're using Acadians, and it is, you know, a task we put under digging deeper. It's just kind of giving us more information than the iReady universal screener does. And Acadians reading in particular is also our dyslexia screener that we have to use. So Acadians measures phonological awareness, letter naming and letter sound naming, nonsense word fluency, oral reading fluency and comprehension. Acadians reading is a set of standardized formative indicators of essential early literacy skills. Sorry, early literacy skills. Acadians is administered, Acadians reading is administered one-on-one with an assessor compared to the iReady, which had done all on computer, students working by themselves. So currently, for our Acadians benchmarks, 26% of our students is in the red, 26, I'm sorry, is below grade level. 29% are approaching, 15%, I'm sorry, 48% are in grade, which is a proficient or extending level of learning. And our Acadians math, Acadians math measures early math skills, computation, and concepts and applications, depending on the grade level. Our newest learners are learning those early math skills, and I think we'll butt into intermediate if they're working on computation and concepts and applications. This is a set of standardized formative indicators of essential early math skills. And a little bit difference, our K's and ones, they have the one-on-one with an assessor. Our second through fifth grade is given a whole class timed assessment. Any questions on the Acadians? We're reading.
I have a question.
Yeah.
This is the first year we've used Acadians, correct? Can I just ask the teachers their professional judgment, like what they feel is best for the kids? Because you're getting two different readings there, from iReady and from Acadians. So which one is more accurate, do you feel? Like, which one's giving you the most information for you to be able to service the kids? Because you're paying for both.
I think it's also hard. It's also hard to compare because one is a timed assessment, so a lot of the fluency. It's a hard to compare the test. Fantastic. And you get a lot of information.
And iReady is with all kids on the computer, on their own time, in their own space and world, that they're doing that? And the other one is one-on-one? So you're going to get two different, you're definitely going to get two different readings.
Right. But the assessments assess that iReady doesn't necessarily do fluency, so it has that whole standard audit system that's also really important. So we get the two views.
The two views. So they're both giving you something different, so you put the package together.
Okay.
As we've often said, you know, these are, these are one task, one day at a time, right? So this is just like a piece of the puzzle, a piece of the pie here. Other in-class measures, that is not necessarily part of this presentation, but we just felt it was good for you to know. What our teachers use depending on the grade level of our classroom. Hegarty phonological awareness, phonological awareness screening test, called PAS. The MZ or Gilliam screener. Our third, fourth graders this year are using the SAS modulars, which is going to give them information through progress monitor, but also practice taking the SAS test. So this is kind of the first year we're using it for both. iReady math quizzes and unit assessments, performance-based assessments, in-class for reading fluency, progress monitoring measures, and there's others, you know, depending on the teacher that they use. So this is what's next, and this is what we've talked about with Jill Zier, our cooking assessment director, and this is what we've already been doing at our PLC or our team times. Currently, our teams are doing data dives with their colleagues, with their grade level of core our colleagues. We're going to continue to monitor and progress monitoring to determine effectiveness of the instruction. We are differentiating small group instruction during class time. And we are creating targeted interventions in and outside of the classroom utilizing our support staff. So next month, Ms. Toole, our school counselor, will be here to talk about how we've kind of revamped our MTSS tier-two and tier-three system. And we've already begun that process in-house. And a lot of this, when I say what's next, it's kind of what we're doing and what we'll continue to do.
Could you go over the New Hampshire SAS reading modulars a little bit more? Because it almost seems like it's a practice for that test, and I thought there wasn't anything available for that.
What do you mean?
Like what exactly is that? You're saying reading modulars, it's not up so. If you go back, I think one.
Yes. So we've had access to practice tests.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. This is the first year that we're using that not only to do practice, but also for our teachers to do progress monitoring with their students. So they're going to, they're going to do it throughout the year, not just a one-time practice and be known what it's going to end up.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions?
You good?
I just have a question, like not about this presentation. Thank you for the presentation. And if I could get an email to me, that would be great. For reference, I just had a question about enrollment. Because in June, we were at 131 students, and now we're at 118. And I know, you know, we had three left start in kindergarten. And with the shift in the grades, we have nine less in fifth. But it would still leave some, you know, a higher number than I would expect. And I just didn't know, like, what happened? Was it just purely families moving out of town, or families homeschooling, or?
I don't think there's anyone that's homeschooling that left. It's people.
All people moving?
Yeah.
Wow. Okay, I just never, I knew it was like a little bit of a change.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, there's some houses on the market, so it's like some bedrooms. Yeah, I get some families.
All right. So next, our, our team here, Kristen Schuster, Maggie Sousa, Isabel Smith, Merrill Javonski, and Ms. Stevens are here to talk about the science of reading and kind of the why behind that. So I'm going to turn it over to them. Do I need to run it out there, or do you guys want to do this?
You have it, I'm.
All right. So first, I want to say thank you so much for having us tonight. I am very proud to work here and very proud to work with these amazing teachers behind me. As you see tonight, they're very reflective, thoughtful, and purposeful in their instruction. So I just wanted to say that to start. So we're going to have an overview of the science of reading and reading instruction at EKPS. And Isabel Sousa, I am teaching third, fourth grade this year.
I'm Merrill Javonski, and I'm teaching first and second grade.
Isabel Sousa, first and second grade.
Kristen Schuster, the reading specialist.
Ms. Stevens, first and second grade.
So the goal of this presentation is to outline the science of reading and highlight some of the science of reading aligned teaching strategies that we use here. As you know, last year, the 1-2 team really presented on some of their data. And so we're here today to really show you the why behind this. First, on the presentation, we're going to give an overview of the science of reading. Then we will walk you through the history of reading instruction, as well as a brief history of East Kingston Elementary School's reading instruction. We're going to demonstrate an unaligned science of reading teaching strategy, as well as a lot of the science of reading aligned strategies that we do use here. And then we'll close out with a quick view of some in-house, in-classroom data. So the first slide that you see here is a real bird's eye view of what the science of reading is. So Go and Tomner came up with this framework modeled after a multiplication problem. Word recognition, so the ability to read words off of a page, times language comprehension, so the ability to understand the oral language, gives you the product of reading comprehension. If you have a zero in word recognition, where decoding is really challenging, a great language comprehension, your reading comprehension will still suffer. And vice versa. So really, this is a very oversimplified view of what reading is. But the reason this is so prevalent right now, this model, is because Go and Tomner really wanted to emphasize the importance of word recognition and its place really in reading comprehension. This, Dusie, other slide, is Dr. Hollis Scarborough's Reading Rope. And so the idea behind this is that reading is multi-passive. There are many different components, and they all work together to create ultimate reading comprehension. So what I did is I took the simple view of reading, reading from the last slide. I twisted it to show you the components and where they are in Scarborough's Reading Rope. And then ultimately, on the right-hand side in the purple box, is reading comprehension. So in Word, we'll start with the language comprehension piece. That's the red part. There's background knowledge, vocabulary, language structures, verbal reasoning, and literacy knowledge that go into the whole language component of the rope. On the bottom is more word recognition, which is phonological awareness, which is more of manipulation of speech through either syllables, all the way down to the individual sounds. There's decoding, and the very last one is word recognition. And what I want you to take away from this slide is that reading is multi-passive. And we are taking a multi-passive, multi-sensory approach in reading here. So next is going to be Caroline, and she's going to give you a little bit of the history behind the science of reading and education.
So just super quick, so the whole language approach that a lot of us probably learned when we were in preschool kind of started in the 1800s by Horace Mann. His philosophy was to memorize the appearance of words. I know in my elementary instruction, I really thought was what we did. I don't remember the explicit ones in instruction. And then we kind of moved on to operating under the assumption that learning comes naturally to everybody. And we're just looking at the word, trying to memorize it, and kind of moving on. And we're not really in that comprehension piece. And then kind of turned into the, what you've kind of heard, the war on reading. So it's the whole language approach versus the structured literacy. So Lush published a book called Why Johnny Can't Read. I suggest you read it if you have one. And they kind of dive into why students can't read. And the thesis was that the lack of explicit one instruction in American schools prevents children from learning to read properly. And then... So then 1900s, a new approach, which is faster than what a lot of schools use today to, for their literacy instruction, incorporates both the elements of the whole language and the phonics piece. And then here we are today. The National Reading Panel determined that effective reading instruction requires the five key concepts, which is phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary, and comprehension. And here we are today, before students can truly develop a love of reading, before they can read to learn, they must learn to read. And that's what we're really doing here at EKPS, is that explicit phonics instruction. And we feel to see that in our victims.
So that's really what the science of reading is. It's a method that involves the explicit teaching of phonics skills. And then students use the skills to accurately sound out words and take the guesswork out of them.
This slide's a little hard to see, but as you can see, we've made a number of shifts over the past decade here in literacy instruction at EKPS. Prior to 2013, we had power standards. And across the school, we were using standards to try our instruction. Teams were working together to determine the resources that they were going to use as well as assessments. So there's a lot of variation vertically across the school of what teams were using and how they were assessing. Around the same time in 2010, the power standards were released. And so that was another area that we needed to look at. So due to all of that, the variation in power standards that were rolled out, we had a shift. So we started using a few of the widely-used early literacy programs that were about this literacy. And although phonics and phonological awareness were part of those approaches, there was really a heavy emphasis on comprehension, on comprehension skills of all fluency. Just recently, we established a CAT team, a curriculum assessment team. And through that and discussions at the CAT team, as well as professional development that all of us have engaged in really high-quality professional development, we have established shared beliefs among us, and that really has driven the shift to the science of reading. It's not a pendulum shift. It's not a top-down decision. It's really, this is something that we believe in and that we're taking as hard as we can as teachers. So that's sort of how we've gotten there.
So to kind of illustrate the shift a little bit, these were the strategies that were considered the best practices in the past. The most common ones I have are the biggest on the top. Eagle Eye, looking at the pictures and then trying to guess what the word is. Skippy the Frog, skip it. Go to the end of the sentence, come back, see if you can figure out the word then based on what the rest of the sentence says. And once the finish, the sound out the first few sounds, and try to figure out what the word is based just off those first few sounds. So I chose a passage that I thought that you might not have a lot of background knowledge on as adults unless you're really into this thing. And I covered up 20, or yes, 20% of the words, so 80% of the words you can read. And I thought that I'd challenge you to try to see what your comprehension would be with being able to read 80%. Does anyone think right now what it's about? So this is why actors, we were matched, but wait, we need no strategy, so let's. Oh, do you want to guess? What am I being told?
No.
I, nothing's coming to me right now.
So using the strategies that were considered best practice before the science of reading, I revealed some of the first few sounds of the words. So you can try again. I just put that first paragraph there to see if you might be able to get a better idea.
I feel like you're talking about making a coin or a penny.
Is it the edge of a can?
I don't know.
Do we have any other strategies we can work?
Yes, we can try Skippy Frog. So I highlighted a sentence in red that only has two words that we don't know any. So we can read the whole sentence and then go back to those two words and see if we can figure out what we're saying.
Is that the ME?
Yeah, ME, I think it's metal. Up around. Pushes a metal up around the edge, form around.
You're right. I think it's coin.
I think it's a coin.
Yeah.
Okay. So E T A L, up around the edge to form around. This room protects the final coin from wear and makes it. St.
Staple?
Staple.
Starting?
Still. Still. Stiff.
All right.
All right. So one more strategy. I got this from a website. And this was a picture that they have on the website, so we can still be able to help with it.
Well, it's not a coin, though.
It's not?
It's like a, well, I mean, it's definitely a metal.
Coin or something.
A coin, yeah. Yeah. It's C O Y N.
Coin to create a.
It makes it.
All right, we can look at it with a bit more accuracy. This is 95% accuracy. This is what we would expect our students to be able to read at an accuracy of when they first read the decodable readers that we use in our O G instruction.
It's stackable. Yeah. So. It did get coin, though. It did get coin, though.
Yeah.
Yep, so this passage is about, we'll go to the next one, we can read the whole thing. It's about making coins. And I got it, my source was usmint.com. And I just wanted to point out one more thing. One of the words that we had covered up was edge. And we could use stretchy snake strategy to figure it out. But without the explicit phonics instruction, how would you sound out that word? I might say eh, de, de, eh. So, that's why we made this question.
All right, I'm going to say a word. You're going to repeat the word and you're going to isolate the unpronounced sound. Are you ready?
Yeah.
All right. Chewing.
Chewing.
Subtraction.
Subtraction.
Unity.
Unity.
I'm oatmeal.
Oatmeal.
Them.
Them.
Nice. All right, now get out your choppers. I'm going to say some letter sounds and we're going to rap them together. Are you ready?
Yeah.
All right. Side.
Side.
Bu.
E. B.
De. En.
En.
De. Et.
Yes.
O.
O.
A. K.
Dusk, say dusk. Say dusk, but don't say s. Dusk. Say beast.
Beast.
Now, say beast, but don't say s.
A. And...
O. O.
A.
A. O. E. E. O. O.
Super chronic, that one sounds on way through the air. There's someone who has been super hyped here. Sound and sound.
A.
I.
O.
What does this mean? So, A, it can make what sound?
A. S. A. E.
Ag.
Ag. A.
Zeg.
E.
Ab. Tom. Ugly. Lynn. O. Med. Suck. Emma, fun, L. Is that...
Crumpet.
I.
Crumpet.
Who's the brain patient here? Buffy's friend, right? What is it? Now, I would call it a... Yeah. And what is your favorite kind of problem? What's your favorite kind of problem?
How would you change ya? Chia? How would you change ya? Chia? That's cha. You're really thinking. Yeah. Eh. Ya, ya. Yeah, switching. Nice, cha. So, we had ya. How would you change ya to pop? That first one.
Try that one.
Right, so here now. So, we have pop. Now, we're going to add something back in. So, listen carefully. If we have pop, how are we going to make it pulp? Oh.
This one, wait, this one.
This is what we have pop right now. How are we going to make it pulp? Oh.
Oh, good. I like that.
Is that what you're doing? No, I swear. It's about how we know if a word is spelled with OE or O-E. How do we know?
It's not an OE if it's at the end and it's spelled with OA if it's in the V-U.
Okay, so let's talk with each other in a sort.
OA, so no. O, two. Toast. No, this is... Per, F, is red. Puzzles, gum. A little bit missing.
Maybe soap.
Soap.
Or foam, maybe, really foam.
Foam. Um, I think it's chicken.
What are the questions that you're planning on answering?
Because if it's so, it's so long here because O, it's like on the first sound, then co, oh, it was, okay, I'm going to learn my note.
Or do we hear something after the O sound? Co.
So...
No, we don't. See, I'm cute. I think Justin Ross in New Jersey died in a lout because he has giant hair, right?
Yeah.
Let's make an example. Where's his friend? He thinks he's in New Jersey, but which place has the giant hair? Graham, replace. Yeah, actually, he does, he makes it, he's in, um... He basically said he's in under.
All right, in grades three and four, we are using phonics to drive our spelling instruction. But something new that we have brought on this year is morphology. Morphology is the study of morphemes, which are the smallest meaningful parts of words. And the main benefit of it is its impact on vocabulary. So, that's really our focus with it, is so that kids will have more word parts, so that when they see unfamiliar words, they will be able to construct meaning or try and at least figure out what they mean. It also impacts their reading, their decoding skills and their spelling. But our main focus is vocabulary. So, we're all taking the letters course and they kind of give you a guide of like when you should introduce different morphemes. So, primarily in one through three, it's the prefixes and suffixes, things like that, which they do a lot in their spelling. But then we're also introducing them through our morphology. We're also introducing Latin and Greek morphemes as they come up in things that we're teaching in math, science, or social studies. So, last week or the week before, we were subtracting. So, we learned sub, which means below, and track, which means to pull. So, we learned, oh, it means to pull below. So, they were able to kind of construct meaning from some of the things that we're focusing on. So, in the classroom, we all do a three-part drill. It looks different than the phonics one, but we have cards and we add to it each week. And so, I'll go through the visual drill and I'll show them the cards and they'll say si means to no. And we go through and we practice these. Sometimes they, they have their own card bank, so they will practice it with each other and do the three-part drill. But that's one part. For the auditory synthetic, I'll tell them, I'll say, have a morpheme that means back or again. And they, on their boards, will write read. And another thing we do is sometimes we blend them. So, we'll put like three morphemes together and they'll just work on reading them, even if they're nonsense words. And then sometimes they'll come up with like, if this was a word, what would it mean? So, they're thinking about what those word parts mean, putting them together, which is really awesome. Each week, we introduce a new concept. This week, they got four different cards. So, they got four different Latin roots and, uh, root, sorry. And we chose these because right now we're learning about geography and social studies. So, we thought it'd be important to know geo means earth. I don't tell them what it means at first. I just give them the morpheme. And then we brainstorm a list of words that have that morphemes in it. And then they talk, what do you think this means? And they came up with earth, which was the meaning. And then on their cards, they write on a picture just to help them remember it because that helps make a little connection there. Throughout the week, they practice and apply it. We read passages that have the morphemes in them. That tree right there, it's hard to see, but it was a morpheme tree. So, they picked one morpheme and then they wrote different words that they knew that contained that morpheme, or they used their cards to make words. And then they wrote what it would mean, not from a dictionary, but from what they knew those morphemes to mean. We had a sort. So, we had S and BS, which means more than one. And they knew that when words end in certain ways, you add a BS, and other ways you add an S. So, they sort based on that. And then we learned another spelling rule, the doubling rule. So, they knew if it was a one-one-one word, that if it had ET or ING, a one-one-one word has one syllable, one short vowel, and ends in one consonant, then they would have to double the last one if they were adding ET or ING. So, these are some ways it kind of impacts their spelling and reading as well.
So, we wanted to share just a little bit of data tonight. So, the current first grade will be the first phase through these kinds of having pure science of reading-based instruction and practice. So, we really focus just on the current first grade. We're putting together some data. Core and Gillian app has different assessments, but they have something that's called a level one assessment, and it provides a benchmark to see if students have mastered the concepts from the spoken sequence that comes before. So, for first grade, it would look at if they have mastered the spoken sequence that was taught just in kindergarten. One key component of that assessment is called the sound assessment. And a sound assessment really assesses if students are able to listen and recognize phoneme sounds and then transfer what they heard to graphemes and write them correctly. So, on the next slide, you'll see we have some pie charts just comparing the sound assessment for last year's first grade compared to our current and second grade to this year's first grade. So, we can see that, or we're guessing that after having a full year of OG instruction and practice, what we saw this year was that the first graders were coming in more closely aligned with where we would want them to be within the spoken sequence. So, we saw more of our first graders this year were meeting on the sound assessment and fewer were approaching more below. And the implications of that were that we were able to start more first graders on the spoken sequence where we hoped they would be. So, some next steps in literacy APKES. We broke it down at the individual level, at the teacher level, but then also collectively as a school. So, as teachers, we're going to continue to learn about the science of reading, research, and practices through PD opportunities. So, all of us are enrolled in the letters course, which is a two-year application. And we're learning so much just from that course. We're going to refine our craft through self-reflection, but also playing each other into our classrooms and getting feedback. We're going to collect data through progress monitoring that we can then bring to those data dives like Kristen talked about earlier. We're going to provide differentiated instruction and practice when we enter our classrooms at the tier one level. We're going to use data as a school to facilitate data dives during team times and then decide on next steps. We're going to provide interventions based on the data and progress and use support staff for that. And we're going to explore writing approaches and resources that align with the SEU-16 adopted competencies, but also would complement what we're doing with our reading routines and practices.
Dan, we'll send out a survey. So, if you guys have any, like, questions, we know. We'd love to take your feedback, what you think about this, or anything else you would like to hear from us at a future support meeting.
That'd be awesome. Thank you. Great presentation.
Are we still with you? Thank you very much, by the way. That was great. Are we still on? You're all done? Okay, so, um...
Did he want to do that or? He didn't mention that.
Current year's support staff handbook is on your list.
It's, um, and APKES board, just for the board faculty and wasn't?
So, can we do that next meeting?
Can we put it in the next week so you can see that it's completed?
Yes, can we put that in the next meeting? All right. Okay, so, board committee assignments, superintendent evaluation. We had a meeting, really not much. Esther is working on her goals. And I think, did she give those to joint board yet? Okay, yeah, so she gave them to the joint board, so you guys had a chance to see them. Once again, I will say that they are very detailed and very much aligned with where I think the whole district should be going. And I am very pleased with the goals she set forward. And she really pushed all of them. So, she's driving herself to, to really hold herself accountable, which I think is really nice. So, little bit of opinion there, but there we go. Policy committee.
Do we want to circle back to this, just in case if anyone has anything after the presentation before I go? Or? Or?
I would like to remind everybody that public input period is always open, so if you wanna make a comment, feel free to raise your hand. Uh, you two both came in after we said that, so. Alright.
So our policies tonight, we have policy code A D C. A tobacco product ban, and this is a review revision. And it's a revised, um, response to House Bill five eleven. And it talks about prohibited electronic devices, whether for tobacco, cannabis, vaping, et cetera, and the exclusion of requirements for implementation and notice. We have policy G B C D, background investigation and criminal records check, this is a revision. It has revised language and also clarifies provision of employing applicants who have been, uh, charged, who have charges pending or convicted of a section five offense in addition of a designated to review criminal records check documentation. I J O C volunteers, it's a revision. And this policy was revised to mirror the definition of designated volunteer in policy G B C D. Other definitions were added to help promote consistent interpretations of terms. And then policy code J I C K R, this is the bullying, harassment, and retaliation report form. So this form is being relettered from the former G B A A R that we talked about last month, that was recommended for withdrawal. We however did not, uh, but we, it's still in use and it is more appropriately attached to policy J I C K, student safety and violence prevention bullying. So, uh, we're gonna be renaming that to go with the appropriate policy. And then we have policies for withdrawal, which would be G B C D R and G B A A R, so I don't know if you have any questions based on that. So I'll make a motion to, uh, adopt policies A D C, G B C D, I J O C, and J I C K R as amended.
All in favor? Alright.
And I'd like to make a second motion, sorry I didn't do that all at once, to remove policies G B C D R and G B A A R. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, is that it for?
Yeah.
Okay, um, safety and security. Um, in full disclosure, I am reading somebody else's notes because, um, I got caught up with a work call and was late and didn't make this meeting. So, um, they're looking for a crosswalk, um, at N E S.
Yep.
Um, looking for some grant money for that. Um, IDs are being checked daily at the high school now, um, so far that's going well.
Yep, any towns who particularly well, and there's only one accident number and it's, yeah, sure.
Yep. Alright, um, the schools are going through a homeland security assessment, um, with Steve Cooper and actually a question for you, are we, it's voluntary, are we doing it?
Uh, we just did it years ago, so it's been our city inspection.
Okay, so we've already went through that, alright. See here, other stuff is useful, and if you think of anything useful that I'm leaving out, please let me know. Reunification, actually, can you speak on that?
Yep, we are working with other areas, school districts to come up with an area reunification plan, based on updated research and data from our area agencies and experts in the field. Right now, it would be an incident where another member of SEU sixteen for reunification could go and help another member of SEU sixteen's, um, schools for reunification. Well, unfortunately, what we have found out through the history of emergencies recently is that it affects everyone in SEU sixteen. So even asking middle school to go help at a crisis at the high school, it's gonna be impactful for that staff. So instead, we're working with, um, P A, Dover, Portsmouth, Oyster River, all summer with Rochester. And, um, so grant funds of super units are gonna pay for our complete trainings for reunification. So that if we had an emergency, Portsmouth or Dover or Rochester sent their staff to run the reunification plan for us. We would have to use our own staff and we'd be dealing with the crisis and they could call us up for, to go help them as well. So all of our counselors and mother health providers have been trained in what we call psychological first aid in SEU sixteen. They had a three-day training two years ago, Dr. Bates can have it at Harvard, it's due for trauma. Um, so that would be expanded, so we'll all just have the same language. So it's just working with the local, first responders, all of those areas, and then super units identifying reunification trainees. And then the area agencies doing trainings together and then a little bit of reviews. So it's just elevated level of, um, training to support all of our area agencies.
Okay, thank you, any questions? Alright. To, uh, wellness.
Uh, there is no update, I have not received any communication at all from the wellness committee. Um, the, it, our first meeting, we were supposed to have last month and I reported that we didn't have it. And I asked if there was going to be another meeting and I haven't received any communication, so no update. Um, I'm gonna keep going. Uh, community engagement, um, so, um, we have started the process of looking at, uh, our King Fisher, um, park, which is set out back, which is the outdoor classroom and trails that we are looking to, uh, revamp, re-vitalize. Uh, I'm not sure what the word is, right now it's in pretty big disarray back there, um, it's overgrown and there's definitely some, um, decayed wood that probably were benches or picnic tables or different types of setups for students to be out there. Um, there are multiple places where there are different centers or stations, I think I counted up to thirteen or fourteen. Right now, we have not had a second meeting outside of, one of the, uh, engagement community members has gone back and taken pictures. Um, I spoke to Principal French about, um, the reality of this committee, um, is that we need to meet monthly or bi-weekly for something to actually get done. Um, it's not gonna happen on a four times a year type situation. Strategically, if we're going to make this happen for our community, um, we are gonna have to meet multiple times to plan this out. So I have talked with a few of the, um, community engagement members and asked them to meet with me on Mondays, um, after school, four o'clock-ish, so that it's an open forum that people can come and start planning, because otherwise it's not going to happen. Um, we need the engagement and the efficacy of the community, that includes the school, the teachers, people outside of the school. Anyone who wants this to happen, it's gonna take more than two people to do it. Um, I have had great response, or verbal response with, what a great idea, fabulous, can't wait. What can I do to help? And so those, those are the first stages of creating a plan, of getting things into action, but right now we need to really start, I almost wanna use an agile board, I don't know if people are familiar with that, or scrum board, where you really look at all the questions, all the brainstorming, and then put them into, into tasks. And then people take on tasks and then you move it. And so for our movement to happen, um, I'm hoping to get some communication out that we will start meeting on Monday afternoons. And so if I'm by myself, so be it, but I hope that's not the case. Zoe at the library has put together a flyer for us. Right now, it only has two people on it to contact, I'm hoping I can get some more, um, volunteers to be open to receiving contact or questions, so that it's not just the two of us receiving all of that. And I also would like to work with Zoe on getting some of our multi-generational people out there, so college kids, um, our retired folks. And, and Brandon and I did have a, I thought, positive, I'll throw my opinion there, um, positive conversation with our, um, SST. So we spoke to the director of SST and want to engage, um, our career tech educational center, um, through most of this project, where they're really working on authentic assessments, making it a public product, um, using their skillsets that they're learning. And, and so, um, the director was very open to that conversation. And I, hopefully, Brandon and I will be going over in January and pitching it to the SST teachers and really looking at how we can engage SST in this process of, of creating this park. So we're making movement, it's small, um, the school, community, teachers, I hope get involved, um, and the outside community, they'll start, they'll start seeing some communication about when we'll be meeting on Mondays. Brandon, I don't know if you wanna add anything?
Summed it up pretty good.
Okay.
Alright. Goal updates, Tiffany.
So I just wanted to thank the teachers again for that awesome presentation and I was just hoping that we could get that on the website. You know, yeah, the portion of that, like their presentation. And then also I'm surprised that the state department, um, New Hampshire State Department of Ed does not have the updated data on their website. Yeah. Yeah. I think that's all sticking here.
Alright, I think is normally your goal date?
Is updated.
Updated. Alright, uh, capital improvement plan, now that we've got quote for the, um, roof, we should probably spell out a five-year thing, next couple of months or so. So, let's sometimes it work for you. Alright, any other new business?
Yes. Yeah, it's at a time.
Oh, yes, thank you, um, for reminding me that deliberative. This one's on you.
Well, I, I cannot be there at one o'clock, so either you have it and I will not be there, or we change the date, which I don't really wanna do for people.
Changing the dates probably, and the option, the other option is, did they say eight?
So I can try to be there for eight, it's a weekend thing, but I really can't be there for one, so it's just a, it's a conflict that I have on that weekend. So I will skip my Friday and be here from eight to ten.
I'm fine with that.
Yes, um, I could make either time, I would not wanna present to the town at eight o'clock in the morning, cause I feel that's a little early, but, um, you're presenting, so. Um, next year I would like to go back to one.
Alright. So we'll go with eight. Okay. Pete had a concern that if it runs late and we run into the town, um, thing, what are we going to do?
Ten thirty.
I think we should be able to get it done. Okay, we'll have to make sure to schedule the, schedule that accordingly and make sure there's plenty of public input done. So, okay, but I can work with Pete on that too, so. Alright, uh, old business. Alright, um, before we go into non-public, I'm gonna, um, close out the public input section unless anybody would like to say anything? Nope. Okay, once again, teachers, thank you very much, that was wonderful. Alright, we are now going to go into a non-public session per RSA ninety-one A three, sections A, or A three two, sections A through I. Andy.
Tiffany.
Kirsten.
Alright, so we are out of non-public. Let's start with, I wouldn't, we gotta speak up, cause that's, that's a one-way book. I would like to make a motion to extend up to twelve thousand dollars from the maintenance trust fund. All in favor?